Before we get started, hi, everyone. Would it be possible to just have everybody announce that they're present? I just want to make sure that I have everybody that is there on the minutes.
Do you want to do a roll call or do you want just?
Just go around in a circle, whatever.
Evelyn Greenstein's here.
Marie Galassi.
Kirsten Morscher.
Oh, thank God.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Brianna.
Yeah, I am here. I wanted to share, I have a hard stop at seven for bath time. Unless, of course, things go awry and I have to stop sooner than that.
We have a hard stop because.
I know. It works out.
All right, so first water business, is there any public comments?
I'm happy to make a comment. Actually, my name is John Hand. I think those of you know me, I was a little surprised. And I was not the only one that the board trustees vote is coming up so quickly. I don't think I spoke to anyone, but I had toward the idea of running for the library board, although Marie is up for reelection. I'm just not qualified next to her, so I'm happy to. I'm happy that you guys are running, but it really is up to the voters. I don't feel like this absolutely communicated to the voters in the library district that this vote was coming up. I looked on the web page, it was kind of buried. I had been monitoring it all summer. That petitions needed to be signed and turned in to get your name on the ballot. You guys are in charge of disseminating information to the community. It is the library. You guys need to in future do a much better job. I know, did you put a, did you put a notice in the Troy Record?
Yes.
That seems ragingly insufficient in 2022. Make sure that people know and understand their circulation is way down. There are social media avenues that you can use. There are email blasts. I'm supposed to be on the distribution list. I didn't receive anything. And other people did. I know at least one of the person who really wanted to run for the board. Who was unable to. And while I'm very supportive of the candidates that I think you have on the ballot, I think that. Hopefully, it is up to the voters to decide and maybe that's something you guys should do better job on in the future.
Well, we really are supposed to engage in conversation now afterwards. I will certainly.
You can do it, because I might be leaving before seven.
Well, no, it is our policy not to do that. So we will, I know, talk at some other point and I'd like to. Have some con, you know, counter that. Anyway, thank you though, Jeff.
Thank you so much for your comments, sir. Would you mind just sharing your name again for the minutes?
Sure, it's John and last name is Kane, so K A N E.
K A N E?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And thank you guys. I don't mean for it to sound like an attack, but it's about.
Treasury's report. Two things. Well, we'll do the bills first. We're making, the finance committee makes a motion that we pay the bills in the amount of forty six thousand five hundred and three dollars and seventy cents. All those. All those in favor? And then secondly, Paul and I met with Keybank. And in the process of speaking with them, realized that. Leaving the money in the investment account at this point is probably not the most prudent way. And they had recommended perhaps investing some money in treasury bills. So we are, the finance committee is making a motion that we take two hundred and six thousand dollars out of the investment account and. Invested in three month treasury bills.
Hundred ninety-six thousand that we received as a request. And the ten thousand that we are received for stained glass repair. None of which will be all for the next three months.
And I believe we call it today, the interest rate on three month treasury bills is two point eight eight.
At least a couple of days ago.
And it's expected to go up.
Again, today, but anyway. The stock market went definitely tank.
Carolyn, can you confirm the, the amount and then they're called treasury bills?
Yes, three, that's two hundred and six thousand dollars.
Okay.
And they're three, and they're three month treasury bills.
Three months. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You'll, you'll remember that's one of the things that municipalities can invest in. Our government securities. And T bills are the most secure investment in the world. You will get your money back. Three months, there is. A possible penalty if you do take it out before the three month period. But it only really affects. Your interest.
Well, I do. Isn't that kind of all our buffer?
Is it what?
Isn't that pretty much all our buffer, all our, that we have? What if we do end up needing some? Where does it come from? Is there, is there, do we have enough of a reserve in terms of?
Yeah, I think, I think basically. There's about forty thousand that's over and above that amount in. Reserve.
Because, I can't, I know I've just read this, but I, there was, I think. The, making sure you don't lose capital was the first principle. And the second was liquidity and then third was.
Which is why we only went with the two hundred and six and three months. I mean, you could do one month.
Or I'm, I'm just thinking maybe a little, not the whole amount, yes.
I don't. I don't know what the protocol is, if you're allowed to acknowledge me or have to wait for somebody else to acknowledge me.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to exceed them.
Just go ahead.
Try not to. I, it sounds like you would have liquidity, sounds like you could. Sell the T note back and get your full value of your capital back. There's no risk to the capital.
No, right.
And you would only risk losing a quarter of two point eight eight percent. So you may lose, you might, you might lose the interest that might have been accrued over that period. So I don't have concern with the liquidity or the risk to capital side of things. I did hear two different things. I just want to make sure I understood that correctly. I think you said there were six hundred thousand dollars in that.
In that, in that account, but, but that's where we can put our money.
Okay. Operating. Okay, so then, again, there's only, that would leave forty thousand then free and clear outside of this team.
There's about forty or, that's, you know, part of the construction ledge that we accumulate. I mean, this is, sorry, but this is very, very conservative to take that money. Most libraries would do a hell of a lot more money in investments in T bills.
I, I feel like if we don't do this, we are not being visibly responsible.
Well, and I, I think it's a good idea. I'm just questioning whether we should put in all of that.
Well, you're looking at five or six thousand dollars an inch.
Compared to forty nine dollars.
I mean.
The first time we've done it and, but then the capital, the, the capital amount. I mean, lots of times, the, you know, when you invest in, even in CDs and such. If you don't hold it to maturity, you can lose capital.
Yes, not in this.
These are T bills and not money market certificates.
Right, but I'm wondering whether it doesn't apply to T bills too, that.
Not that I can see.
Have to cash them in that they, it's a lower amount. I, I just would feel more comfortable holding a little bit more out for the first time. And we're, we're talking about, you know, wait, perhaps seeing how things go. For a smaller amount for three months rather than jumping in with that total amount of money.
I think now's the time to do a larger amount for three months. There doesn't seem to be a need for that. We still have forty K. It's unlikely in the next three months, if we do this sooner than later, it's going to be needed. Later on, we might be needing some more, you know, as more projects come to fruition. So this might be the time to put more in, see what happens. But we know that the risk is minimal for doing it. And, and to ensure that this is the first time we're doing it. It's the first time that treasury bills really have been paying anything in a long time. So that's why.
I, I understand that. That certainly was advisable to check into, into, you know. Feasibility of increased income, but we haven't done it all previously, even when interest rates were much higher.
Are there any other thoughts, discussion points? There, there, there's a. Motion on the table. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor with the amount being the two hundred and six for three months?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to.
Any days?
Yes.
And then we won't have any extensions because everyone else has voted.
I got it. I'm good.
Great, thank you. So who goes to the process of? Paul's gonna. Okay. Look into the best way of saying those. All right. Next, same consent agenda. We have minutes. I can't remember seeing a building committee meeting, doing.
I don't remember either.
I didn't see a report, but I'm not sure. No admin, there is no president's report, there is another Hudson report, which you must be very interested in.
Well, there is another Hudson. I missed that on the website.
Okay, we might have gone there a little later. So, do I make the motion to accept the consent agenda? Do we have a second?
A second.
Might be easier for Brianna, yes. Carolyn, take it. All in favor?
I agree.
Okay. Everyone's voted. Fiscal policy review. So yes, it got in there late, but this is a revision. Based on. One, the discussion from last month. Some follow-up conversations with Paul, with Carolyn, Keith. As they are the ones that responded to. Request for comments. I did not include every sheet, but, so if you don't mind, I'll go over this. Part of the changes are either there's strikeouts in. Like talents or in bold. So the proposed budget will be submitted to the board by their July meeting for consideration and discussion. And instead of in August, by August, the board will review the proposed budget for final approval and subsequent presentation for public vote. We've added a section on ongoing budget review, which basically covers the things we actually do. And is now articulated in the policy. And. As a. I want to put this. Just be clear, it is board approved budget. It's not the publicly approved budget because what the public approves is the tax levy. So that's noted here. We've taken out, we've added that all this reimbursement checks and taken out the twenty-five thousand. Because it's going to be all checks, require the signature. As well as the president, treasurer of the board, and the next part is again, the twenty-five K or more is going. Added a bit, so. Pragmatically, when signatures come in. The finance committee will review all bills on a monthly basis and shall vote on whether to recommend the full board approves payment of the monthly bills. This is something else that was suggested. During the yearly October organizational meeting, the board shall determine which bill, such as garbage utilities, health insurance, retirement can be authorized and paid automatically. Even though these bills will be included in the. Paperwork that we get, so we know that they haven't paid. And also in view of continuity of service. On the following, if neither the board treasurer or president is available to co-sign checks. The duty shall fall to the vice president and then to the secretary. Most likely on an occasion. It's very unlikely to occur, but you never know. In the anti-fraud program, programs and controls, the auditor has been added. About, as reporters of any. He suspected instances. And other fiscal controls, which is basically again, since it seemed to fit also in the section of. The activities of the finance committee and treasurer conduct on a monthly basis also. And lastly, the credit limit of the credit card will be no greater than five thousand dollars. So those are the changes, revisions, additions to the policy that we have in our website. Any comments? I do, actually.
Okay.
Not really a question, but in light of our discussion, the finance committee meeting about the balance sheet. And we, I should have brought that up when we were doing the treasurer's report.
Okay.
We, we kind of were talking about the balance sheet. I don't know if any, if you looked at the balance sheet.
Yes, it seemed to be different.
It's much different and much, there's a lot of stuff in there that really isn't relevant. It's, and we didn't used to have a balance sheet and it only kind of started over the last. I don't know how many years before I was here. I didn't know whether people felt like. It's relevant to them and they want to see the balance sheet, like there are there things in there that you really need to see? Or is it something we can do with them?
Does that relate to this?
Yes, because it, it says in the report that we're going over.
Okay.
It lists the balance sheet. So whether we leave that in or take that out.
I would have to go back and look at it to see which, with the revision. Okay, because it's the first month we've gotten that, right?
Yes, it is, yep.
And this was a recommendation from the fiscal.
The auditors were the ones who changed the, what the balance sheet was. Not whether or not we get the balance sheet, but what was included on it.
But wasn't this language also recommended by the auditors?
This language in here, fiscal control? No.
No, okay.
So we can, we can revisit that next one. It came up, that was, why don't we talk about what we actually do? So they put that in. It's codified. That was it.
Thank you.
Do other libraries have these balance sheets?
No, it really doesn't supply a lot of information that is.
They don't use balance sheets?
What's that?
Other libraries use.
I, I don't know. I don't know.
I can check.
You might want to do it once a year or something. I don't know. I mean, it's just a lot of information that. Is not particularly relevant to a municipality or nonprofit organization. I don't really use it.
It was something that I believe that some former board members had more experience in other boards and wanted it included. It wasn't something that or.
A lot of the balance sheet information is for tax purposes. Assets and liabilities, I mean, it's depreciation is.
Because it includes some things like depreciation, but it's still looking at, do you, do you have enough resources to cover your, your things that you have to pay out?
That's what you want the cash flow and the bank statements for. That's what I use. I can make sure I have enough money to pay my bills. We're not a complicated organization here. I mean. You know. With a million and two, it's not. That complicated.
On the other hand, one of the biggest responsibilities we have is the fiscal responsibility, as I read somewhere today. And I don't think we're well trained. I don't think board members are well trained to. Be able to. And how to do that and how to fulfill that role.
Well, I know you see, you see a budget and a budget comparison every month. You know, that's based on what you're taking in and what you're spending. Those are, to me, the relevant figures.
But you're, you're, you have an accounting background.
Yeah.
Yes, being presented with information, being well trained to interpret the information, maybe two different things.
Yeah, perhaps I feel the responsibility more heavily than, than others. I, I don't know.
Well, I, I would hate to make that judgment. Take it very seriously. It just, do we feel that we need to have this particular. Report, this particular page in our report, when we're getting, what expenses are, what are incomes, where it's coming from? How it's flowing, how it compares to, you know, where we stood last year versus, like you said, depreciations and.
In, I mean, for example, in some of the liabilities. You know, they are covering accrued amounts, which we don't normally do in our regular reports, like our income statement.
Do you think that adds to people's confusion?
It, it, yeah, probably. These are. You know, basically accrued numbers at a particular point in, in time. Well, you know, I don't know. I, I really don't use it, so. I guess it's up to you both.
Issue of whether. It provides information to somebody from the public that might be interested in how we're handling our finances and whether we're doing our due diligence. But let's have everybody think about that and make a decision.
I mean, the other thing is like doing it on an annual basis or something, between a six month.
Been done when we've had our audits, don't they usually?
Yeah, well, the audits, yeah, and, and they.
On an annual basis.
So, yeah.
But I, I know, as Evelyn said, that. Some of our board members have been very uncomfortable that there wasn't one.
Well, you know, like you said, maybe. Yeah, maybe you close the books and then, you know, we do an audit and then we provide a balance sheet, you know. For that period of time. I, I don't know, but I mean. Again, it's up to the board if that's relevant to you, if that's helpful, fine.
I believe the auditors also do a more thorough balance sheet on their reports, which, you know.
Yeah, that's in our report.
So that's always done annually, which is.
And that's a public document. I mean, that, that report.
It's on the website.
Yeah, did we put that on the website?
I don't think so.
We did not, but I can put that there if you want.
I mean, not the management letter, that's not a public document, but the rest of it is a public document.
Okay, yeah, we can add that.
It can be put, you know, yeah.
Yes, okay. Does that make you feel more comfortable making a decision now?
No, because I haven't really had, looked at it from that perspective. But, you know, you can take a vote and see how everybody, you know.
I, I don't know if I was reading. Next one. But I just wanted to bring it up, like if it's, because if people aren't using it, then it, it's just extra work for joy for, for what? You know, they have another sheet of paper in there that nobody's looking at.
And I, I appreciate it, being willing to let this look rather than trying to answer the question without having that question before us.
Mission statement. So we started talking about mission statement.
Are we through with this?
Oh, you're right. I got, I got way late, sorry. Um, so to the actual revisions to the fiscal policy. Any comments on, I'll leave balance sheet in there for now.
Okay.
Or should I take it out for, just in case? Well, how's this? We'll leave it in for now. We'll see how things go. Next month, or do people feel comfortable in talking about whether or not to. Approve these changes or have any more comments about other revisions at this point? Well, is there a reason why we, that you don't want to put this off for another month? No, there's no reason. That would be.
But I'm not sure which way you're going on that. Are you putting it off or not?
My, my suggestion.
And one of the things I, I noticed and I thought some of the things that you had suggested were very good.
I think those were.
Well, but last month.
Okay.
You suggested last month.
Okay.
Were, were good things to pick up on, that, for instance, that our procedure that we've been following for signatures of checks were. You know, not consistent with it. I, I've been looking at this, usually you only have certain people who have signatures on file that can sign. So when you list off all the, there were four different people, would they all have signatures on it? So they have, would have.
Talk about that.
And I also found some inconsistencies. For instance, I saw something to the effect that a director and the business manager need to find, sign conflicts of interest yearly. And as far as I know, that hasn't been being done. I mean, it's a lot to take in. It's like eleven or twelve pages. But that's an example of, one of the things I did notice, which. Jumped out at me that.
It might not be an inconsistency. It might not be something that's being followed, which is different than it being inconsistent with, you know, the document. It might be something that we have to look at and make sure it gets followed each time. Unless you're thinking that there shouldn't, that shouldn't stand, but I think that's probably.
No, in fact, I believe that the director, it has been recommended in terms of best practice, that the director. Sign a conflict of interest statement even outside of this document. I also. I also wondered. Whether there, if this was consistent with the guidebook on that recommends best practices.
In the handbook?
Yes. There was something I saw that I, I thought might differ.
You remember what? Because it is helpful.
I don't, I don't remember. What it was.
Well, how's this? Go back, look and please write, you know. You can share with the board.
I was actually out of town since most of the documents have been put up. On the website, so. Well, maybe had service.
I did not. That was the weird part. But if you would please go back and. Send it to everybody and then we can figure out how it should be revised, if it needs to be revised.
That isn't what happened this time, but if you want anybody who has suggestions to send them to everybody.
That was last month and then she sent us a thing, an email asking for any changes. This was the changes that people had suggested from last month.
Uh, this was the changes that people had suggested from last month.
I asked for changes, only two people responded, I took those changes. We talked about it a little bit further to, um.
So it was sent to everybody last month. Everybody's suggestions.
Asking for suggestions, yes.
But not, but you're saying I should send any suggestions I asked everybody?
You just said you saw something that you thought was inconsistent. Would you please, what I'm asking you to do is if you look. What you think is inconsistent with the handbook or something else you've seen, send it to everybody so we can redo it. Uh, beforehand, I'll try and incorporate it into the documents so we could have something to approve next month.
So that you want everybody to do that, because.
I've always asked everybody to give me suggestions.
I think what I just heard was that previously you had asked her, said they to you, you did not ask everyone, everyone to send out to everyone. And then I just heard that, that's what I think I heard.
Right, right. But now I'm asking you because our time is getting shorter. If you just let everybody know that there, she's found this, now she knows where it is.
But the thing is, why shouldn't that, what you're asking apply to everybody, not just me?
Because you're the one that just brought up an issue, so that's why.
Right, but other people may as well.
But I've always asked people to send their comments. It's not anything. I'm sorry, okay, how about we?
If anybody has any comments about it, say it as any group. I think there was, I think there was the email originally, and maybe people didn't reply, reply well, when they. Didn't see it, but I did see some of them. You can just include it, if you still have that email.
I will, I'll look. That would be helpful. That would be this next month. I want to change fiscal policy. But what I'm hearing is of the changes and additions, no one says any objection right now. Okay.
To those. As for what?
A chance to look it over, so I'll react in the same way that you.
By the way, pizza is here. If people do want to, you know, eat while we're working, please go ahead. Let's not, you know, have to wait until it's cold. It's seven o'clock and we happen to be upstairs.
And don't be too disappointed when you open a small pizza that has no cheese on.
As well as, what is the pizza with no cheese?
Which is a really new venture.
This could be, I can eat cheese.
I think it's called bread.
It'd be a great tomato. But someone could be vegan here, too. So it would be very.
Feel free to share some of it.
And John, if you'd like.
Thank you.
They put sauce on it, I.
I hope so. As long as there's no cheese in the sauce. They know you're. Anyways.
Did we finish? Did we?
We went over it, I guess, with you, yes.
Right, but I have a, a, a question.
Okay.
So I noticed that we're behind in payments from.
I'm sorry.
But we got the check. So now we have an extra three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So I'm over a million dollars in that account.
Okay, good. I thought it might have been delayed by Andy being.
No, no, this is early. They sent it early, they sent it, see, they sent it in September. This is August. This is a cutoff for this.
Okay.
It's August. So, but they sent it early in September. It used to come late all the time before Andy. Not to, not to stick up for him. But we, one of the things that they do too, as I was saying in the finance committee, is that. Uh, we get a lot of checks all the time because they send money as soon as they get it. They don't hold it and fool around with it and whatever it is, they will do it before. So we get money all the time.
So let us go back to this part of the agenda. Um, we started talking last month about mission statements. We would, you know, really like it if we could continue with that. So I, I know you, I think it was you that wanted to look against something and. Hopefully we've gone back to the pieces of the Dropbox and have some thoughts, or thoughts about mission. And how to phrase our mission in something that is.
I have to be honest with you. I mean, I, I didn't really look at the agenda to think I'm gonna come here today. You know, of what our mission statement is, that's definitely something that I will feel prepared to. Cash out without, it taking some time. You know.
We've got a seven o'clock hard deck.
Unless somebody else has something that they've worked up and they think, I mean, I think it should be short.
I, I apologize. I had, after our meeting, I broke down my phone, the mission statement, and I put it in my phone and I didn't send to anybody.
Can you pull it up now?
I, I can, but I'd be happy to.
Yeah, please, let's do it. It'll be a.
Like system.
Yeah, it's always a discussion.
I put together, public access to information for an informed and empowered community.
Public access for informed.
To, public access to information.
To information, sir.
For an informed. And empowered. Community.
We're using empowered.
Yeah, public access. To public access, to provide public access. Oh, oh, I'm gonna add a word in the beginning, provide, because like groups. You know, covers everything, the empowerment, the information.
Well, not one.
Okay, what's missing? Good, what's missing?
Well, generally speaking, we probably need to address the recreational reading, um. Kind of thing as well. So, I mean, we. Buy a lot of fiction. Is fiction important, or is it more recreational?
Well, you see, I see fiction as a way of, for me, this is personal, informing me about life sometimes. And, and certain like genres, like I think some science fiction is quite iconic. In what it says about society, what it says about dynamics of relationships. And I use that often. Um, wave of heaven is to me the epitome of problem solving. Um, and other genres kind of, so to me, I guess I do see that as informed, but. So you, you are thinking, being more clear about the word entertain, you know, the, the word entertain comes up.
Well, yeah, I think that needs to be included somehow.
It could also be captured under the term culture.
Culture?
And from another part of my life. If I provided certain officers with information, they'd look at me and say, so what? That what you were actually have to do is not just provide information, but. Sensitize it into intelligence, tell them why it's important.
Actually, I, I think that. Public library does not do, does not tell us, but this is important, that's not important, I think.
But we, we should be providing. That range of viewpoints where maybe, should we be providing that range of viewpoints where other people take that and make a proposal?
And, and that's why I use the word public access, the information, not that we are giving information, we're providing access so people.
Do you think, so you don't think, do you think the wording that person used covers that? What you're saying?
I don't think so. I hear his, his objections, some skittishness with the way I'm phrasing it, but. Somehow, it introduced, dropping the phone book out there, we gotta tell, tell why somebody, why this might be important. What you can find here.
That's like what I quoted, uh, from the last time where, you know. At the libraries provide information and librarians are the guide to knowledge. Um, and you do want to help people to be able to interpret information. That they are presented with.
Right, like the New York Public Library says, to deliver on this promise, we rely on three great resources, our staff, our collections. And our physical and digital spaces to provide opportunities for learning and growth to all New Yorkers.
Couldn't, hi. Hi, couldn't one argue that, um. Providing the library, like librarian servings, serving as guides to this information, that that therefore falls under public access. Part of the access is not just the material, but then you have access to the staff who supports the guiding. To understanding said material. Just a thought.
I have a couple. Uh, I have one that was in with my strategic plan. Um, materials, I'm not sure. Whether it was just personally or something that came up in discussions. Um, it says, our mission is to inspire lifelong learning, advance knowledge, and strengthen our community. And. It, is it?
Yeah, I think it's not. That's, I read the second half, but that was.
So maybe that's where it came from. Remember I said that I.
Right, yeah.
And. Um, then Gilbert's bill mission was, the library is a gathering place where you can learn, grow, and enjoy. Uh, Saratoga. Is a source of info, information, inspiration, and entertainment, which sustains and enhances that quality of life. In our community by providing access to resource and experiences to help all of our residents satisfy the curiosity. About the world and participate fully in civil society. Now, please.
That's real.
I could never remember it from my elevator. And then Schenectady, you missed, I'm how you went through and you. Uh, the mission of the Schenectady Library is to satisfy our community's educational, informational, cultural, and recreational. Recreational needs by providing free and open access to a comprehensive range of material services and programs.
That's a very standard mission statement. I mean, hundreds of libraries use that mission statement, but it does cover.
What I, what I worry about that is that someone's gonna say, hey, I wanna come here and play softball.
Yeah.
Says comprehensive recreational activities, so, okay, it's pretty broad, maybe beyond our mission, but.
So perhaps.
I do like the idea of including somewhere in there the word growth. Because I think that you can use information for growth. I think that kind of goes in the fiction, because reading fiction can lead to growth, you know?
Certainly can increase your vocabulary, you can. Can stimulate your own.
I think this is, for some of us, it'd make more sense if we had. Displayed in some format several different mission statements where we, where we compare and contrast and we have done rather than.
And Carolyn had, had pulled out a whole bunch a while back.
Right, and then of course, totally forgot about it, right?
I was kind of like in the front of my mind for a while. Ricky Deck, first thing in October.
Um, I prefer the reference to community in mine, the one I read versus you, just because. I feel the library can, you know, be used by the community, so where that sounds a little bit more outside. Of what occurs outside the library.
Well, and that only should it be used by the, it should be creating.
Well, that third place, right. Is what we kept saying that we wanted it used for in our grant proposals.
Right.
Yeah, I guess some way to address the idea of libraries as centers in the community that, um. You know, encourages community or provides places for the community to need, et cetera, et cetera. Some way to.
I touched on that, I thought that in a nice.
A gathering place, as she mentioned.
Nice discussion.
Yeah, I think we're, we got some words.
We got words. No, and, and I don't mean to be facetious, I know I'm facetious, this wasn't facetious. They're keywords, and we're seeing the keywords and part of me thinking that someone wants to see this all visually. That then you can look and do the analysis of what words do you see a lot? And how do we do it to make it ours too? And be able to fit on a plaque.
And being able to be remembered by me.
Right, because you want to be, you want to be able to say what it is, you know?
What are you for? What did you do?
Right, what do you stand for? This is it, but.
Six, six words per line, six lines per slide, thirty-six words on a PowerPoint slide. Can we get it there?
You know, but at least what I'm, I'm hearing, I'm, I'm not sure if everyone's sharing it, so I wouldn't speak for anybody else, is that. There is some continuity in what we're saying, that there is that one page. It's just what are the right words and how do they fit together and what should be included and what doesn't need to be included, so.
Yes, I also like the idea of lifelong learning because I, I do see that as another piece of educate, of the educational system that exists.
I mean, coming from a digital programming standpoint, that was.
A big part of it. And, and coming from a, a career. That spent most of my time in.
If you wanted to add more words, you drop in self-directed.
One point I used that in a statement about the library, the library is the primary source of lifelong learning in the community. I put that in somewhat grant applications.
Of lifelong learning.
And lifelong learning, I mean, that again covers the fiction. Entertainment as well as the cultural, right?
You know, it's too bad that we have to use less words. Sometimes less is more. Why do we just know less words that do more? Thank you, everybody. This is good.
So, should we forward? For next, yes, put the Dropbox forward, you know, so everyone can get review, um. Sort of taken my inadequate notes.
I think it's gonna be hard of the real. Analysis piece. Um, nominating committee.
It's a logical nature, but may I interject for a quick word?
Um, I'm.
I'm gonna be really quick. There is tacitly known to be a library who doesn't come to make their life better, and I think that can be simple, but it also depends, who is your mission statement for, who's reading? Using grants? Are you using it for funding? Are you using it for people?
Oh, very quickly, again, just we have a pause. To begin with, it's for us. It's for us, and then it's for our community, from us to staff, everybody. And now I'm gonna have to go back to this, I'm sorry, before I get yelled at too. Um, nominating committee, so, um, I think there's a pretty far gone conclusion of what our board is gonna look like. Come October. Between now and our, in October, our organizational meeting, we will go through choosing our officers all over again. We have to do that every single year. Um, in between now and then, we have a nominating committee to actually propose a slate of officers. To the board, uh, for election, um, although according, in, in our bylaws, there is also the opportunity for nominations to be made on the floor. But we will follow the process too of the nominating committee. Um, I'm asking if anyone who here would, or Brianna, um, who would like to serve on the nominating committee? It's not a very long meeting, I'll tell you that. We do try to be in person.
So what is a nominating committee? They're deciding who to nominate?
Basically, yes, we come up with the slate for president, vice president, treasurer. Of, of this one, because I came, we've always had it as one, we've never had to have two. It, it's like twenty minutes at the most, I think. Well, first of all, we'll find out who wants to be part of the committee, and then we can find a time where we can all get together. It would be more probably appropriate if we do it after September twentieth. Well, I, you know, it is pretty much a far gone conclusion.
I think we're scheduled three months ahead of time now, but. I think it's dangerous for me to read things.
I, I do not believe that, by the way, because we can't, if we have an election and then. It's, it's impossible to do that.
Well, yeah, I guess you could do that. You could just have your elections later, like you could, your term would run. Although if somebody was going off the board and they were on, then it was a problem.
Yeah.
Or schedule, schedule, establish the date of the nominating committee in June.
Oh, okay, so it's really just establishing the committee should be, yeah, the committee, okay, I got it.
But let us, let us double check on that, please. And then we'll just change that, I think it's kind of.
Unnecessary.
Yes. Tail wagging the dog instead of the other way around. Um, so are you interested in being on the committee?
You can be involved here if you're looking for members, if you have enough members, okay, step back.
There's no requirement of members. Keith.
How many members do you need?
I, I don't think that we, it doesn't delineate how many. Two, at least two.
Um, no, I'm.
She's saying, okay, she doesn't need to be.
Oh, sure, I'll be on.
I figured. And Brianna, just, I, I, I duck, you know, just asking if you're interested, if nominee committee.
Now I'm gonna pull the newborn card.
It would be very inappropriate that to ask.
Appreciate it, but so I have Kirsten, Keith and Marie volunteered. Is that right?
I mean.
And yeah, yes, yes.
I'm gonna make, make, seeing the great interest that has been expressed and mostly given a form and critical mass of persons. I'd like to withdraw my nomination.
Rejoining my combination from the nominating committee.
Yes.
Noted, Kirsten.
I'm great. Thank you.
Sometimes after the twentieth, we'll just sort of come together. All right, director's report, please.
Well, it's not a great.
Report. But we have to do something. Yes, we do.
Abigail Pennon and Maggie Helenek. Both are library associates in IPS. Abby has a master's degree in teaching from Bard College and has worked with young people in a number of teaching positions. She is also as a library assistant. Maggie has a degree in English from Marist College. She has experience working as a net. To care teacher at the Susan Odell Taylor School in Detroit. We hired both of our libraries as associates at the same time, given the fact that. There's not a lot of people out there, so we had to make a decision quickly. But they're working out in children's room and doing a great job.
Yes.
Now hires.
Okay, do we have a second? It's Kirsten. All approved. Oh, business, new business. Hold on, get to finish that. There's currently four open positions, which I think is important to know. I thought it was. That's right. Well, I'm just saying it's important that we realize that is.
I didn't technically. Figure out the turnover rate, but I think it's close to fifty percent. Yeah.
I, I, I just. Figure the fifty percent turnover rate every year and it's a challenge. But that's for completely different reasons, so. At least I'm assuming so.
A little different, there's a bit of difference in the different classes that we're looking for. But the lower end, the library assistant, the top is so far. You know, to find people. But. So we've got still a bunch, I, I, if you go on Upper Hudson's website, it was kind of funny, there's this huge. That every time. They usually, used to be two or three. You know, you'd see. Now it goes on page after page of openings out there.
But it's, it's not just libraries, it's everything.
Well, yeah. But. I just, no library.
Sixteen something at Sonic, I saw their sign to that. And we're paying, you know, which is, I mean, it's information for the budget as well, you know. To justify.
Sonic can probably get free food.
I know, I. One of those lemonades.
Well, thank you for putting in such an effort to find people, Paul. It's not easy to have a lot of turnover.
No.
And integrate people.
Yeah, I, I do nothing but recruitment and building issues. That's it. All day long.
Anything else?
No.
I don't wanna, okay.
Nothing. Pizza, there's, there's pizza.
Well, please get a, get a slice. Or what is my grandma's acid? Um, oh, new business? Can't think of anything. Yeah, well, I know there were two things, but unfortunately I didn't write down both of them, so I only remember absolutely one, so sorry. I just want everyone to know that outreach has been moving along through summer. We have connected with the Tri-Music Hall and. Appeared at their program at Barker Park. We did River Fest for the entire day. This is Lori Dreyer and I have shared. The days, evenings, we've been at Oakwood Cemetery for a concert. And we're going to be at an elementary school, Rensselaar Elementary School in two weeks. So. We're getting up there and thank you to Lori. For setting up all of these dates.
Yeah, are we moving along as far as forming a committee for that? Because I would be interested in working on it. I know you guys met before, but.
Yeah.
That is definitely something I would.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the outreach committee, Matt?
No, I, no, I'm not, I'll be asking, are we moving forward with creating an outreach?
Yes. So there's been some changes and who's been interested and I know we've. Written to you, so.
Right.
But not, it isn't as formal as, but then again, it's, it's a more. But yes. Keith even got a bit involved too, so. And I, I'm really sorry that I can't remember the other thing I went.
Well, that, that does sound very nice, then you said a Rensselaar School district?
Rensselaar. It's Rensselaar Park, it's part of Lansingburg School District. So that's on the twenty-second for their open house.
Well, that, if I remember right, that's lower grades kids.
Yeah, they're through.
Yeah.
No turnpike?
Not that. Um, you know, we've also talked to Carol about if school fourteen does another thing, that's always fun and we're on Halloween. But, um, any, any other, just in case, anybody thought of something? If I think of the other point, I'll let you know at some point. Um, community feedback?
I did, yeah, community feedback that people had wanted to run and, and didn't see. When the cutoffs were. And I mentioned that we have difficulty getting people to run and that was. Well, of course, considering. You know, that the outreach wasn't good, so I just passed it on.
See, this is where I had, like, an issue is it was on the website, it was. Big on the website, it's on Facebook, it was other.
Big on the website, because when I went to look, it was buried.
I, it often was not, it was a tough thing.
It may also be a device you're looking at it, so I think that. I, I look at on the phone and I, I find things. Are sometimes difficult to find on the phone. Now, maybe other people have different experiences.
And I was looking on the computer and so I don't think it was pinned to the top. I think it, it, you know. Got buried by other things being added. Well, it may be.
And it's changed, of course.
Before other things got added.
But it was on our Facebook page, people were going out and asking and talking and recruiting, so, you know, we tried.
Well, maybe it's just a matter of putting it on Facebook page more than once, or, you know.
Sending out in the newsletter.
Right.
That we have.
And Chinese members was there.
I mean, we have all those names that, you know, you send them to anybody who's subscribed to them.
Exactly, because so many people don't look in the newspapers anymore. So I think that we can. Make use of the feedback that we've received in, in doing better next year.
And maybe a similar comment. I did speak with some. Members of the community. Who were asking about, sort of new programs are going on at the library with this, having a library, so they're, they're really. Not seeing things. And wondering what, what, what's, what's coming up these new.
This has been like an ongoing. Issue, and even if we go to different neighborhood groups and put us in the newsletter. People still say, I didn't see it. Uh, it's, and, and sometimes you don't know what to do at a certain point.
Yeah, and we have a diverse community. Some people really don't care if there's anything new, as long as they can get. Their standard tactile services that they use.
One thing I would just say, when someone says something like that, I would ask them, just make sure they subscribe to the newsletter, because they do send out. Through Public Library News, which I get, I don't know, I think you get it every month.
Okay, really? Because I don't receive it and I was told when I inquired that it was be, that they don't send it out often.
I just thought it just. My headphones.
Like, I mean, have you gone in, I mean.
Yes, I subscribe to it and that's why I brought it out because I don't receive it.
I send it, yeah, I send it every month, usually it's been.
Every month, but I don't get it.
I get. Um, you might have to re-subscribe, it might be in your spam.
And, and, well, I don't think it's in my spam, but.
Sometimes that's a problem.
The problem was I wasn't told that I would have to try resubscribing. I was told that, oh, we don't send it that frequently.
So. That I. Well, we, just to, like. During the pandemic, like, we were sending it periodically, but as we were. Upping the programs, we have started, you know, sending it. I've been trying to send it right after like a board meeting or if there's a reminder coming up, like the vote info meetings, I just sent it. Not that long ago. There's about five hundred and thirty-five people on that list that gets the email. Newsletter.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to know because I will make a point to sign up for.
That's enough for one of my.
Then you didn't subscribe to the.
Sometimes it depends, I don't know how you send it out, but sometimes there's a limit on how many you can send you.
Yeah, this one, there's no, um, there's a limit on MailChimp to send it out to a thousand, so we have not reached that limit yet. So I just, you know, whoever subscribed to that list. I am able to send it to them, but you might just have to re-subscribe or just check your spam, that's the only thing I can. Really say. Cause it's a, it's from MailChimp, it's from our service, yeah.
Because there is a difference between having to go look for something and having it come to you. Which is the advantage of the, of the newsletter.
Yeah.
And I, I actually do receive the Albany Public. Sorry. There, I hear frequently from them.
Anyway.
I, yes, I generally, when I approach people about. Our vote next week and importance of this budget, I've generally heard very supportive comments.
Excellent. Excellent. Um, any other? Feedback? Okay, um, public comment?
A couple of things, one, you guys are out of compliance with the meeting call. Are you supposed to change the twenty-four hours in advance? Another document on your webpage.
We're not probably always as good as we should be.
You always have to.
Is, is the agenda posted publicly on our website?
What's that?
Is the agenda posted publicly on our website? Then we have not been posting it publicly, it's usually just given to the board members, but. If we need to post it publicly, that's up to you guys, you know, I can, you can let me know and I can put it up.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes. According to your bylaws, your nominated commission happened after the election. So we might have to board makeup after the election, you can't nominate it on a committee after this.
Well, schedule the committee.
Correct.
We can ask who's, who's doing it, we're scheduling it. Sorry, again, breaking the. Presley. No, I said I am.
Okay.
If there were others running this particular year. People who haven't been on the, it would definitely be scheduled. We would still ask who wants to be on the nominating committee, because any new person would not be. Appropriate for a nominated committee if they haven't taken the oath of office as of October. The nominating committee could, would still be made up of people here and it's easier. At September, while people are here to say who wants to be on the committee. But it would not be scheduled till after the election. And if you may not have heard, but we aren't going to schedule the actual nominating committee meeting until after September twentieth.
You are on the chair.
Okay. But I wanted to know who wanted to be on it and I did say it's kind of. Clear who is going, that it's gonna be the same makeup. We didn't schedule.
I need to be a second.
We didn't, we didn't schedule, we just, then we would do that after. Okay. Anything else? All right. Date and time and next meeting will be October eleventh. You may want to change that on the. Agenda. Um, so it's October eleventh, five o'clock for finance, five thirty for regular meeting. We will be here. And I will make the motion unless there's anything else.
The next meet, the candidates meeting will be.
The next candidates meeting will be this Thursday, seven P M at Lansingburg. Now I say Lansingburg, at the Lansingburg branch, just to be really specific.
Thirty-seven hundred forty.
Okay. Okay.
I don't have that.
I'm gonna make it, what? You're welcome. I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Second. On, all in favor? Okay.